So let's. Let's open the meeting of Cold Spring zoning board appeals. I'm the chair, Eric Worth. And with me is John Martin and Billy Fields. This is Billy's first meeting, so welcome.
Great.
Hope you find it interesting and don't hesitate to ask questions. Don't be shy about if you're wondering why. Do things or don't do.
Okay.
There'll be a period of learning.
Adaptation. Yes.
There's one item on the agenda tonight. It's a public hearing. Ten East Belvedere Street. The applicants are here, so. Let's open the public hearing. But let me begin by saying that a notice for the hearing. Appeared in the August twenty eighth issue of the PCNR. And the applicants have submitted. Postmarked receipts showing that they mailed notices to the neighbors in a timely way. And this, since this proposal concerns an area variance for a single family residence, it's a type two action under SEACRA. And therefore exempt from environmental review. Have you brought a sign affidavit? That is a, one of the forms in the application packet which. You need, you can do it now, but it's, it's an affidavit saying that you have posted in front of the property.
Yeah, we've done that, but we have not been asked about that.
Okay.
Officially.
Do you have a copy of that? Or if not, yeah, if not, can you print one out? And it's one of the pages of the application form.
It's still, yeah, they came to pick it up last February.
Here's one, here's a blank one. So simply. It's simply saying that you have posted the sign. And it's still there. And then you both sign it and data. This is just an assurance that the, that that particular requirement was met. Place at the top where you put in the address of the property.
What day did you come and get the sign from Abigail? It's the same time that you mailed them.
It's the same day that you sent the voice message. I don't know if you have that in your phone.
Remember?
Did it say it was the same day that you did the mailing?
No, it was the same day that he emailed me something from Abigail.
You emailed me something or I emailed you?
I'll find it. I know it.
I'm not sure what you're looking for.
Okay, Abigail, so you'll keep that form with the other file, file for the application? So that takes care of the formalities, setting the stage for the hearing. And let's start by hearing from the applicants. We'd like to just hear your description of the proposal. I guess now you have finalized numbers, dimensions, so you can, you can fill us in on that.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm. Proposing a fence that would be six inches back from the property line, which we have staked. And it would be eight foot tall, it would be made of pressure treated posts and cedar flanking. That would be spaced apart to let wind through it, but not be something you can see through. And it would be on the north side of the property. And the objective would be to block the view of a. Derelict trailer that you see from the backyard, which becomes a. Sort of a focal point from the backyard visually and. Become subject. As a subjective conversation after that. So we're just trying to remove it from the view shed.
And we did bring color photos that we had printed here tonight, so if you wanted.
Okay.
See those, you get an idea of it.
Once some of the photos are showing more land and you might wonder why are you showing us that? That's to show you the adjacent, the properties that were notified, just so you can sort of see how it relates or would impact them.
But the lot, the property that's most impacted by, that will see the fence, other than the trailer property, is the property that is nine East Belvedere, that we are. Going to own next week, so we notified them because the closing hadn't happened. But they also, you know, didn't, they don't care because after next week, we'll also own that property. And we'll be the people that will see the fence really. And the person who owns the trailer, the trailer sees the fence.
Okay, so I, I see one view that shows like the back of the car and then another view that shows the front of the car. Which one is from your property?
All of those. All those pictures.
So the car is kind of. Parallel to your property line?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Some of the pictures will show a row of. Evergreens that are somewhat small now, and that is five feet back from the property line.
On your side?
Yes.
And this photo, were you standing in your property when you took it?
Yes.
Okay, so the.
I was probably six feet from the property line.
Okay, so the trailer is very close to your property.
Yep.
The, the trailer sits on that lot on Hamilton Street, but it's far away from Hamilton and is. As close to our property as it could possibly sit up in the corner, so if you are on Hamilton Street, which is the address of the trailer, you simply cannot.
You don't know.
See the trailer, you don't know it's there, but it's, you know, it's right next to our house.
The backside of their property and in your yard.
Yes, exactly. And it's just there, it's not, there's no other house on the property, it's just the trailer. It just sits there, it's not something that's in somebody's backyard. It's been sitting there since nineteen seventy three.
And it's occupied.
It's not occupied. The man that owns it lives on Hamilton Street.
This sort of an elevated view from above, is that still on your property?
Yes.
So the fence you proposed, would it, it would include this elevated section?
Can you show me the photograph again? Yes, it would end, that's the last in this row of trees, so it would end somewhere about that last tree.
So why isn't it at the actual corner of the property?
Why does the other car sitting there?
Why mostly, why, it seems to be different cars sitting in there.
No, that's the red car, it's the same car.
So.
And it sits there all the time, it never moves. And I don't know why it sits there, but he owns the house, he lives on Hamilton Street and he owns both of those properties.
Have you addressed other? Reasons for nuisance or fact that if it's a derelict? You know?
We don't want to have a problem.
I think that's somebody else's job.
Well, not necessarily, well, I'll tell you what, in zoning, you know, as far as the law is concerned. Very infrequently, if, I mean, that I have not even seen, I've been on the board for near twenty years, okay, and, you know, look at the law and everything. You know, heights of fences are not, you know, for the sake of, you know, blocking like a private nuisance. I mean, typically it's for like schools or. You know, businesses. And, you know, that it's understood that they are nuisances. And there might be other ways around this, because this could even be a transient situation. I mean, it's been around since the seventies and.
Yeah, the trailer's the.
Describe what you mean by that.
Well, transient meaning that it seems to me that, you know. This wouldn't necessarily last long, it doesn't look like it's a livable space.
It's been there for fifty years.
Well, it's been there for fifty years, but when, when was the last occupied?
Well, if you ask him, he'll tell you that he lives in it. I think that's why he keeps the car there. I don't want to have a big argument with my neighbor.
Well, that's, that's okay, but the thing is, you're, you know, you're also choosing, choosing to buy another property right next door to it. So you're, you're what, you're, they would say coming to the nuisance. Okay, and.
There's no house on that property.
Which property? By the one you're buying?
Yeah.
But I'm simply saying that this is a nuisance that affects that property as well, that you're purchasing.
But I'm not blocking, I'm not asking to block that property's view of the trailer, I'm just asking to block my backyard in the house I'm going to be living in.
And I'm just trying to figure out the rationale of how we do this when it's not typically not, this is the first time.
Understand.
First time I said.
I mean, I don't, so you know the rules and I don't, but I would say on my behalf, that trailer doesn't impact anybody but me. And I'm not asking to put a fence around my entire property, I'm simply asking to put a very nice fence on the one side of the property.
I'm not saying that your fence proposed is not a nice looking fence.
I'm just saying, it's not like I'm asking to build, you know, an entire fence around my house, I wouldn't put any fence at all if the trailer wasn't there.
Right. And again, it's.
People that come to the house think that that's a meth lab in the village of Cold Spring.
You know, again. The reasons for allowing heights fences above what we normally permit as far as, you know, in quotes, nuisance, I mean, it's be. Considered to be an optical nuisance, I would imagine, right?
Danger.
Yeah, continue what you're saying.
That, and that includes danger, nuisance also includes danger, that you can put high fences if you live along a railroad right away. Or, or a major state highway. You can put fences that are beyond the, the norm of what the zoning board allows, and it's understood to be for, you know, you know, safety purposes. But for safety purposes that are. For reasons other than a private nuisance that somehow should be amended in, in another fashion.
Well, let's, let's let them get to the end of the.
Yeah, okay. I'm just saying what, what is in general, what is, you know, it's not like I'm making it, I'd rather see an easier project than, you know, this is different.
Let's get a clear picture of the extent of the fence, length and placement.
I saw it on the survey.
Let's take a look at that.
I can't tell the footage, what's the?
One hundred forty.
The red on this is a hundred and forty. The, the red notation is a hundred and forty feet?
Yeah.
What's the? It's very hard to see, but obviously topographically, if you're above.
Our, our yard is higher, so it does look down at it. And the fence would go along somewhat of a flat area at the western edge and then begin to go up the hillside that becomes more and more steep.
Yes, it's more flat near the shed.
Correct.
Right, and then it comes up.
Yep.
So if we wanted to put a swimming pool in our backyard, you would be sitting in the backyard and there would be the trailer.
So, sorry, this might be a little sideways, but have you? Have you looked at the visual nature of being? In your backyard and what the actual height of the fence would need to be to block that view based on the fact that it's actually? Higher on the eastern side?
Yes.
And eight feet is the height?
That's why they came up with.
No, eight feet is, eight feet is not enough, but it's a start, and I tried to come to the board with something reasonable that could be passed. Rather than sort of overstepping and proposing something that was. Still, I could, I could give you a good rationale for doing it, but just something that I don't think I want to be involved. Right, my, my objective is to. Do the best I can in a reasonable way here and then maybe in. Maybe, maybe the conditions change, but I'm just trying to be a good neighbor, move in quietly, not make a big deal about it. And this is the way to just make it go away quietly.
And those plantings that are there, what are those?
Those are green giant arborvitae.
How long have they been in the ground?
A year.
Since last November, one.
Not even a year.
Not even a year, we put them there as we, we closed.
Right.
You know, that's a good point. I was looking for similar height differences to block visuals around my property.
Yeah.
So I, I put in a pivot fence, a pivot fence, you know, just a pivot. Is it a sunny location, relatively sunny?
Where these are?
Right.
Yeah, it's going to get sun, yeah.
Okay, so, but arborvitae can even grow with minimal sun or moderate sun.
If your point is that.
Well, my point is that I blocked properties that were built, you know, I was, I bought first, but then they built a property and built the house within six feet. Of property line, so I put an arborvitae to the north line, okay, and I put in trivet to my east line. Instead of trying to get a fence that I felt like I could not get.
And then you waited for them to grow.
Oh, yeah, and they'll grow pretty rapidly, arborvitae grow very rapid.
They grow like sixteen feet.
You'll get lucky, they'll, they'll grow to twelve feet, fifteen feet.
We know that they will grow, that's why we plant them.
So suppose I, suppose I regurgitate arborvitae, what would we do then?
I'm just giving you an example.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. I get it. I do, but I'm, I'm just, I just see, I don't want this to go towards, oh, well, you planted something, so now you don't need it. If that's where you were headed, if it's, if it's not to make an incorrect supposition.
People had put in vegetation to screen.
Of course.
Which, which has been done, I could point out several and you can look at, you know, you know, examples, but. That is a way that it is done if you cannot get the fence, when it, you know, if it's a situation that a fence of that height, it's not ordinarily granted, you know. And, and including with the reasons under the law, so.
Gotcha.
I'm not here, I'm not trying to debate with you or anything, because I, I don't write these things.
No, I know you don't.
And, and I'm just here volunteering to do what the village wants us to do.
What's the standard? Of, for variance for a fence that won't impact anybody but us, what's the standard? Because there's nobody here that is complaining, that is my neighbor, that is saying, oh, I don't want them to put that fence there because nobody else will see it except us.
Well, yeah, the standard is, is we have to follow a uniform rule.
Really a set of standards, and we apply each one to the situation, to the facts of the case and see. Whether the standard weighs for or against the request, we go down five of them, and you'll, you'll see that eventually.
Okay, it's criteria that the, again, that the state has put out there for the board to follow, okay? So it takes away a lot of discretion in a sense.
I still haven't.
You'll see.
I still haven't completed my understanding of the, of dimensions, you said a hundred forty, one four oh, length?
That's the length of the property line approximately, yeah.
Fence will be the full, the full line.
Probably not to the extreme northeast corner, but close enough.
On both of the lots, the, the current lot and the one you're, you're.
No, only on the current lot.
Because the survey.
I can't apply for something, I don't own that property yet.
The survey seems to show a hundred fourteen feet for the lot number two, the northern boundary. Am I misreading?
Let me take a look at that, maybe it's a hundred fourteen.
Maybe I misspoke.
One hundred fourteen point four three.
Okay, then I meant to say one hundred four, I'm sorry.
One oh four.
One oh four, my mistake, I'm sorry about that.
I knew it was less than the length, I was thinking it was one forty four, so yeah, one hundred four feet.
So where on the survey, would you be able to show us where that trailer might be relative to the house? Where, where, where? I mean, if it's even going to be within this physical.
Yeah.
There'd be a carport. Okay, so now this is. Bear with me, this is a, is this looking north?
That's looking west towards.
Looking west, okay, so it's looking west towards Hudson.
Yeah.
So it's off, it's off to your northeast of sorts, right? Or your north.
I think of it as the north, maybe slightly west. This is the. The lot to be purchased, this is one of the neighbors we notified, behind this lot is a person we notified. Through the woods in there is a person we notified, and then if I can show you that picture. This, that woods there, this is the other person we notified.
Okay, so where is your road to get your driveway feeds into which road?
Belvedere, which is right next to, this is the, an old spring football field to here.
Right.
So the road is up here, this is the road, that's Belvedere, and that's our driveway.
Okay.
So you're the last house on Belvedere.
Yes.
Being the last house does pretty much take passersby out of the picture. There's no concern with. The impact of a fence on passersby. One of the things we take into account is whether applicants had alternatives and why. They. Need to. Need to pursue the proposal that they submitted rather than any of the alternatives. And I think John has touched on question of vegetation, and it sounds like you, you're dissatisfied with that.
Well, no, that's, that's. A long term solution, which we have already taken under, undertaken right away because it's in our control. This is not in our control, this is a much better short term, and for the next. Five to ten years, I'll be glad to have it.
What about? Looking into legal? Measures, I'm not talking about you directly confronting the neighbor, but rather working through village government. Whether there are violations here that if you. File the complaint, sought.
That just feels very ugly to me, I mean, that's the long.
It also seemed to be a danger because it is so close to the school, especially if you don't see any people going in and out of the.
I don't understand how it's been allowed to be there when the kids do walk on the school path back and forth, right behind there is the footpath to the school. I don't understand how nobody has questioned it, I don't understand how the village of Cold Spring hasn't asked what's going on here, I mean, it is covered with a tarp.
But that shouldn't be our job, and, and we're trying, we, we're new to this town, I don't want to be making this stink, I just want to put up a fence quietly, that's it. Then, then if other people have the wherewithal to wonder what on earth is going on there, God bless them.
Because we, I mean, we have asked some questions and tried to find out, and I did my research and got out how long it had been there to sort of, to see, maybe it's not supposed to be there. Somebody told me that maybe they thought he had moved it from one spot to, from closer to Hamilton to the back, near our property, but I couldn't find any. Proof of that, so I couldn't say, well, he moved it and he shouldn't have been allowed to, so I just, and I'm a lawyer, so I, I did look at all of these sort of other options, but I, I don't want to be a bad neighbor. And I don't, I don't want to be that person who's, you know, raising the, oh, there's this, you know, it just, I don't know.
That's, that's understandable, although also look at it as being a good citizen if the structure is, is a. Danger, a violation of law.
And directly impacts you.
It's not being a bad to, to.
That you're telling us that, right?
Yeah, I mean, the other thing that it does is, and, and this is, this is a real concern, is in the storms and the winds, it's, that was another reason why I wanted the eight foot fence, I feel like it could just.
The, the roof of the carport flaps in the wind and slams up and down, that's the noise factor.
I don't.
And you're right, we, we could, you could justify us. Taking other steps, or we could just build a fence.
Well, there's a lot of people.
One of you could do it.
Well, a lot of people have come.
Right, right?
I volunteer, I volunteer for enough things, right?
Right, no, I mean, I mean, I'm not pointing out in particular, I, I should say, anybody else could do it. And, and maybe there's somebody in, somebody in the town government who's supposed to do it. That would be not my, I wouldn't know.
Build a fence and.
You don't really.
No, to, to, to say that there's a, a, you're like building.
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, yeah, I'm not putting that on you, I'm just simply saying that there is a problem there, there is also a problem sometimes, we, we've had folks come in for eight foot fences because their, their dogs can jump it and they're dangerous and this, that and everything. And, and the thing is, you know, we cannot control what people do with their property or what neighbors do with the neighboring properties, okay? So, you know, it's, this is different, but this is different, this is different, I mean, this looks to be. You know, a, a, just a derelict house. Derelict space, when did you buy into the property, the first property to Belved, Belvedere?
November last year.
So you knew it was, did you ask any questions about that?
We did, we asked a lot of questions, we did a lot of research, we asked the real estate agent and, and everybody sort of indicated it was just abandoned. And just sat there, we talked to the neighbor. We talked to the neighbor who's on Hamilton, because when I, I, when I met the man who owns the trailer. I asked him if he lived there, because if it was somebody's home, I had a different, like, feeling about it, like, oh my God, somebody lives here and I didn't want to. If somebody is poor, right, and they're actually living in this trailer, I didn't want to be like, oh my God, this horrible thing that somebody is living in, but he, so he said, yes, I live there. And then the neighbor told me, oh no, he doesn't live there, I don't know what he does with that thing, he just, he lives, he lives over there, he lives in that house, he doesn't live there, we have been.
It's a different property.
He is for property, he lives on Hamilton, and he said, I don't know what he does there, he said, but there's a light that goes on every night at the same time in the trailer. And he hangs clothes outside of it periodically, or sheets outside of it periodically, he has the, the red car sitting there. He has installed a heater to it and Downy Oil, and our architect called Downy Oil because he's friendly with the owner of Downy Oil, and, and the owner knew exactly what it was, and he said. Yeah, it's, it's very strange, my guys don't like going there, they, they wanted to, to go into the trailer to check on what they had installed, and he wouldn't allow them in the trailer. And all the windows are taped shut, like with paper, when they're in, in the back where there's a window, so you actually can't see into the trailer, so there's just a lot of, you know, stuff going on with the trailer that feels. Stressful to me and maybe as more, as more people tell me stuff, a little scary, so it's another reason why I don't want to be the person saying. Oh, village of Cold Spring, can you please go look at this trailer, I feel a little fearful, which I didn't feel when I bought it, but as I started asking questions and looking into it, I started to be a little afraid. And I have a, a young daughter who comes with her friends, and I thought about the heist, the kids talking back and forth, but I don't want to be the person. If there is a danger raising that flag, I feel like that should come from the village. No?
I just think we've just been put in the position of raising that flag, so. This, this is not going anywhere I wanted it to go, I just want to put up a fence and not, and let someone else find out, like, I just want to live there and not have a problem with my neighbors. So that's where I'm coming from.
You're also welcome to join his board anytime.
You know what, I almost joined the one in Poughkeepsie when we lived in the town of Poughkeepsie and, and I was. I'm a little too far left to center, I guess, at that point in time, but maybe I'd be able to, to do it here, we'll see.
Let's.
That's a different story, I guess.
Let's. Let's um. Make sure we're precise on what variance is exactly or needed. The. Property owner is entitled to six foot fence in the rear yard and then four foot in the side. Front yards, so uh it looks like. The rear, the rear yard ends at a line that goes across the rear facade of the house, so it looks like about um. Uh maybe forty percent. Uh this is of the fence would be on the rear, the other sixty percent side and front. Uh so it'd be um. Two foot variance in the rear part and four foot variance side and front.
So you're pointing out that this line is drawn right here.
Exactly, yeah, that looks like that would would mark the end of the rear yard.
Yeah.
Abigail, um did you receive any comments from the public, written comments about this application?
No, I did not.
Is there anybody um online? No, there is nobody online at all, okay, so there, we can say there are no comments, no public comments on the application.
Can I ask you a quick question, uh so is this the house itself uh on the property line, is that actually the residence? So. I mean, I'm trying to.
This is, this is the house, yes. Yes, I can, I can mark it. That's the house. This is the driveway. And this is a garage. Okay, yeah, anywhere that that is the case, right?
Oh, this is the front of the house?
This is the front of the house.
Okay, well, this is the rear yard here?
Right, see, what what is to your uh like north and east, that's your rear yard. Looking back here, just. So right, right here is, this is your front yard right here, right? Is this your front here?
This is, this is the front.
Okay, and and back here, is this your backyard?
The backyard.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a flag lot, you know, most lots are flag lots. Take a look right there.
Oh, wow.
Well, this is where the trailer is relative to where the front of the house is.
The side of the house is the front, this is the trailer.
If you get what I'm saying, so maybe if this is the front, right?
Right.
This would be the the side to the rear, right?
Right.
Part of the rear yard.
That's the rear.
So this would be six feet. That that would be.
Six feet ends here, this is the six foot portion.
But what if the house is up forward up here?
Well, this is the side yard here then.
Right, that's.
That's four foot fence.
Okay. Oh, yes, that's right, because of the actual rear of the house. Right, okay, that's helpful. Okay.
Hey, um. Any other questions for the applicants, any? Anything more to?
This doesn't help you at all from the second floor of your house?
That from the windows on the second floor of the house doesn't help at all, but it only helps when we're outside.
This is like when you're outside in your yard.
Yeah, my son's bedroom, if you're in his bedroom looking out the window, that, we're still building this house, it's not done.
No, it's the one you can see when I drive, it's at the very end, right, it's sort of like, it looks like it's up the hill bit from from.
Yeah, it's up on a rocky.
Yeah, yeah.
So whose bedroom, you, if if you're just looking out that window, that shots his view.
I don't think you'll ever block that view.
Yeah, no, I, this is sort of a bit of what I'm asking about is like. If we're really honest about the the visual light that it is, eight feet doesn't help you either. Not really, because there's points on your.
For the yard, for the yard.
We sit in our backyard and go.
No, 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 well, if you're sitting in a cherry back, you're absolutely right, I can understand, but I think also that um there is a. This is the, this is the, this is the tricky part, this right, I don't, I'm newer this entirely, so it's just more of me about like logicing out timelines. In my own head about what I think about, I live up the hill in the village on Locust Ridge, there's a house on the corner of Cedar Ridge and three O one. That was a fair lot when we moved in, four or five years ago, they put a house up, and they have planted trees that I tell you right now are fifteen feet tall, and I swear to God, it's been two years. Now, it hasn't been two years, but it's been a very short amount of time in consideration of how long that house has even been there. And I think they're not the things that you planted, but there's something else that literally are trees that grow like weeds, I don't know what they are, you should look at them. Because they are literally. Incredibly tall, they've blocked out their whole view of their house from Cedar and the side yard from three O one with this growth.
Right.
And they're right next to each other. And I mean, at first when I did it, because they were only six feet tall, I thought, what are they doing? And now I understand, like, it even blocks essentially the upstairs windows to a house from even looking at the town hall, it's almost that tall. So there might be a a fix here that fixes not just this very short term issue of, let's put a made foot fence because we're sick of seeing this trailer now. That with a little bit more time, another summer season, whatever, you take care of it for your son in his bedroom. And you take care of it for a long term period, right? So there's an aspect of this that I think is, there's definitely the short term, long term balance here, and I. I see this, I've been in the village a long time, I also understand the dynamic between being new here and not being new here. I live in the McCourt's house, as an example, I've been here since two thousand and six, I live in the previous owner's house. Because that's kind of way Cold Spring is, right, and this guy's obviously been here since seventy two, so there's some issues here around. New interlopers and that sort of dynamic, that's always, no, again, I mean, it's probably his parents were born here too, um so there is that aspect to to consider. Um, the other thing that I'm concerned about frankly is if you close on lot one. No matter what we say today, there's going to be desire to block that view of lot one as well, so it takes this eight foot fence from under fourteen feet to something that's a lot longer and it's a giant stockade looking fence. Um, because that's what I would want to do from lot one.
But lot one is just empty.
No, I know it is now, but I'm saying like longer term view of what you want to do with that land to, you know, you don't want to sit in lot one and all of a sudden like, oh, there's the trailer.
Right, I want to stop somebody from building on lot two, that's why I bought it, so.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah, it's just.
So I think there's that that concern as well, for just in my mind, like longer term play here. I'm not, I'm not suggesting by the way that you have plans, but I'm saying like, I think it's human nature to say, this is our land now, we want to use it, and now whenever we use it, there's this. Stinking trailer that is terrible blight on my experience in nature, right? I also recognize behind you, literally, start of. Mount Taurus and its nature, it's open to.
Yeah.
Animals and everything else, right? Um, I don't know that I'm answering any questions for anyone, but I just wanted to like express these. Uh thoughts I'm having about the way it sits and sort of the, your angle on this, and um. I'm new to this board, so I guess I could actually go to someone else and say like, can you please look into this trailer because this looks like a danger? Because I can play the, I'm new card, um so I can at least um be a responsible uh appointee to a board of the village and see if I could get something going there. Um, obviously with no connection to you at all, um because as I said, I don't want to do the the new old springer thing, um I did that myself.
Well, I grew up in a town much, much smaller than Cold Spring, so.
Me too.
I know all about people, you're not, local pillar road is named after you, I I know all about that.
Yeah, exactly.
Um. And and the trees we have planted will someday um do that, um and if we buy the next lot. We will plant trees and we will never need to ask for events because before we know it, they'll they'll be taller and and this. And we won't have a life in a yard area that's going to look at this, so this is basically um. Something to uh.
So that we can enjoy our backyard.
Resolve, resolve a problem now.
If I could have asked, right, five years for it, to put the fence up, because I don't, if the trees were up, I wouldn't care. But it's not up and I can't be in the backyard at all without looking at the trailer. And it is an eyesore. But it's going to take that much time for the trees to grow up, so. And again, we're the only people that will see the fence, other than the trailer.
Right, um.
You would probably appreciate the fence.
I know, I'm sure he doesn't want us asking questions about the trailer.
If there is no more um discussion to um. To be had with the applicants, then I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second, you're second in doing, aren't you doing?
Yeah, my first meeting, I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, we're closing the hearing, so um that ends your presentation, and we, you can, you're welcome, welcome to stay, you will discuss um. Discuss the application, now there's a slight complication, um the, uh under our new zoning code. We're required to give the planning board a thirty day window to comment on every Z B A application. Uh, the planning board did not receive a referral of this application until after their August twenty two date, so they have not yet. They're they're having a meeting later this Thursday, so they have not yet um responded to the referral. Um, so we cannot take an action, a final action on the application until the thirty days pass or we hear back from the planning board. So uh seems to me we have two alternatives at this point, we can either table the application now and wait till we hear from the planning board and then resume. Or we can. Go through the evaluation process, arrive at a tentative decision, and then um. That that decision will rest until we hear from the planning board, if we hear, if their comment is no comment, the response is no comment. And the tentative decision will automatically be final, or their response is anything else other than no comment. That our tentative decision terms are void and we have to kind of follow, we have to um.
Yeah.
Re-discuss again in the light of the planning board's comments.
So I was thinking uh. Probably could leave the applicant, or perhaps they might want this to go to the. Uh, planning board free and clear of any kind of decision making or tentative decision making on our part, can you explain that one?
We would not report anything back to the planning board, so the planning board would not know.
Okay.
If we make a tentative decision tonight, they would not know, and I don't think they'd be influenced anyway.
I'm not saying it would necess, it'd be just a certain amount of procedure, I mean, the bottom line is we do have to wait with, to hear what the planning board says.
Right.
That that that's the really the first.
We can't take action, meaning we can't have, make a decision, final decision.
Okay, well, I think it's important we heard the information tonight, right, and uh and then can just weigh on it if you, because nothing can be done until we hear from them.
We are, the Z B A will meet again in two weeks on twenty fourth for this orientation. So um.
But but that still won't be, the the planning board won't necessarily got back or maybe.
I'm I'm pretty sure they're gonna, they're gonna deal with it this week, they're meeting in two days on Thursday.
Okay, so we can let the applicants know if they want that they can just come back after we're done, or or do we take care of it before that, you know, if we're going to do that presentation?
Uh, we would do it.
I'm gonna let you figure the logic on it, in the timing.
It's it's more, I think it's more, I mean, uh it's more just um. How you two prefer to engage with your question, if you prefer to do it tonight, but. Potentially, everything is still fresh versus later, or on the other hand, later, maybe you have a chance to think about it.
Well, I I think that.
Strong feeling one way or the other.
Well, I I personally think that, you know, you have, if you have more of a chance to really think things out, uh it might be helpful, and it also might be helpful. We're not necessarily opening up the hearing again, but we can discuss amongst ourselves what went on, who, you know, in the open, or uh. The points that were made.
On the twenty four.
That's right, we can revisit everything, it's the of board members have reopened, so, I mean, Bill, what's your feeling?
I mean, I'm, I feel a bit uh fish out of water because I'm new to this, I mean, I'm inclined to grant it frankly, because. There is no one else that's going to see this fence. Um, I live on a street where there are stockade fences that are above code and they've been above code since before now, I'm not saying there's any reason to say two wrongs don't make a right. But there are examples of making a variance based on these very specific instances. And based on what is assigned to the backyard of the property, is a two foot variance, which that to me is, that doesn't really. Cause me any sort of concern, it's the four foot variances on the side, um. But I think in this case, based on the fact that. You have found yourself in a a situation that you cannot solve. With a uh with a derelict property that they can't remove. That's how where I stand, just as a, this seems like. I imagine every one of these is a unique experience, right, every single one seems like it's a brand new version, and I know this isn't. Um essentially, I think probably the the code probably says, plant a lot of trees because you can't have a variance on a fence, because we can't put up fences that are taller than six feet in the backyard or four feet in the side yard, that's probably what. The code would actually stipulate and dictate. And then there's the human experience that gets involved, so I'm speaking more from a.
The basic. Like fulcrum of decision making areas, um is the benefit to the app, does the benefit to the applicant outweigh? The arguable harm to the community of granting this exception? In reaching, in in weighing that decision, we consider, what is unique about this situation?
And what is unique about the situation?
Well, that's always.
The derelict trailer, right? Right, is that, is that it, the the derelict trailer, is that what you, is unique about it?
Well, um.
Yes. Is that, that's what's driving this, is that accurate?
Yes, that's what's driving it, yeah.
I mean, I'm just asking, yes.
Yeah, that's what's driving it, that's why we.
When you just said, Eric, it's very interesting to me, the the balance between the two things, right?
Right.
The, is there a benefit to the applicant that is greater than the harm to the community, right? And if you put that on scales, there isn't even anything to measure, because there isn't anyone in the community that will ever see this fence. So there isn't actually a, there's not a harm or a benefit, I mean, I guess, other than like, as this, their their standard of living is maybe better because they don't have, I don't know.
Let's go through our our five factors and which tentative decision.
Can I uh address something that the applicant had made, I think that. If we were trying to, you know, look favorably on this, where we really, I I tell you, we haven't seen something like this, you know, before.
People don't know there's a trailer.
Well, no, no, I'm not talking about the trailer, it's 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 that we're um talking about where we're going to go with the height of a fence, uh which would be uh twice the size. Uh, because of something that's being done next door on a private property, that that is what's unique, okay?
Really, most fence applications involve um something offensive on the other side.
That is correct, and.
Weather, noise, light, traffic.
But but they're usually like uh not in the level of eight feet request, you know.
Right.
FYI, you know, I mean, nowhere near.
Well, that just gets it, yeah, gets.
So my my thinking to try to find and think out a potential, listening to what Billy said, you say with the balancing, you've mentioned it before. If, if, you know, it was to be granted, it'd be granted because of the trailer situation. But if the trailer is removed, you put the fence back down to what is normal height.
Sure.
I mean, I, but but it would be conditioned, and that's what would be in the order.
That sounds fine for me.
That would be fine.
If, because if, like I said, if the trailer wasn't there, I wouldn't be asking at all.
Fence at all, yeah.
I wonder if I I if that is um.
It's an, you can take action on it, it's it's an, because we're trying to address what their specific concern is. Okay, and trying to go a little bit be, a bit beyond what we've done before, like, like a bit, quite a bit, and like you said, in the end. You know, averviding might be better in the end, because they will get big, and they will block any views you have. Because they will get big, and they will block any views you have, if that thing is not removed. You know, that'll grow to fifteen, twenty feet, easy. And that'll, that'll protect you, that's what will protect your view, uh, you know, going forward down the line from the second floor.
And that's why we planted them. But I'm thinking about things like my son's graduation party from high school in June, in my backyard. And I'm thinking about these kinds of immediate things that I can't do anything about, other than to come to the village and ask for a variance on the fence.
Well, let's go through, um.
By the way, we've conditioned things before.
Yeah, um.
This, this, that this situation has.
That's enforceable, that type of condition is enforceable.
Oh yeah, it's contract, it's agreement.
I, I know that all the conditions I've seen up to date have been, have taken effect at the time of construction, it's like. You can do this, but you have to build X, Y, and Z.
But in order for, okay, I, I can name a property, it was a property right next to the church. So, I mean, that was something that we all had discussed, that if something was gonna be, be built and be expanded, another portion of.
Then they have to take something down, or.
That'd be, uh.
Alright, well, that's. That helps, um, that helps make the application more acceptable, if we attach a condition like that.
Because it's an unusual place we're going here.
You asked, what's.
And this is a way we can explain it away, if other applicants coming out with a similar thing, well, I got this problem now. And, and all of a sudden, we're like, and they're like, we need an eight foot fence.
Well, there's five criteria to.
Wait, well, we, everything we go through, as you know.
John, you asked, what's you, you were kind of rhetorically asking a while back, what's unique about this application? One, one of the point is, the low visibility of the proposed fence. It's, it's rare that someone requests something that is so, um, out of sight. That's, that's a unique, um, that weighs in favor of the application.
Right, a few things, yes.
So, um. We do go through five criteria and, um. Number one is, um, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. Or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting variance. John, do you have an opinion?
Well, just, just as what we were just talking about, the fact that this is, uh, at the end of the street of Belvedere and Pants Mount Tours, uh. And pretty much out of sight, except for, you, you did point out a neighbor's house is up front over here. Here, uh, I'm sorry, with, with that truck in front of it, that's the neighbor's house, right?
With the white banner?
Right.
They can't see my house.
Oh, that's your house, okay, good, that's even better.
Nice, isn't it?
So that's even better. So, yeah. I, I don't think it will be a detriment, um, uh, for several reasons, uh. It's, most particularly is where it's located. Out of sight, and you did mention that it has airflow. Components to it, yeah.
We'll get to environment.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
So no, no detriment, um, no undesirable change in the neighborhood because of low visibility.
I agree.
I, I will amend it a little bit, the fact that it's a hundred and four feet, correct?
Correct.
Hundred and four feet, so that would make it, you know. While it seems to be low detriment for where it is, it is a very long structure. So we can't, you know, you, you can't see it now, but if you were to walk up to it, you'd see, you know. But, just, just saying. So it's not completely.
I, I would, yeah, that's, that's why, why.
Yeah, I'm actually thinking that the only way that you, and. You're living there, so you correct me if I'm wrong about the, sort of the flow of the property between Belvedere and Hamilton. The only way you'd see that fence is if you came up through their property. Lot one or lot two, or the offending property, and walked to the back of that property, which is off the public road. Is that correct?
Yeah, you'd have to walk up the, up the trailers.
It seems that the only way that anyone will see this is if you actually walk on private property. To the back of.
All the inside.
It's, it's a hill up to, and it's fully forested, right?
Yeah, the, the neighboring property right here, the one with the trailer on it, how did, it comes out to Belvedere Street, right? Hamilton Street, oh yeah, you said that, Hamilton, okay.
So, I mean, I, I don't, I don't believe it, I, I think that's the reason why, is because even with the length. Yeah.
Okay, so, um, virtually, virtually out of sight.
Um, I, I said one, one, I'm sorry, one last question about that, um, obviously, uh, everything changes when all the leaves fall. What happens to the cover of that area property once we get into the wintertime? Did that then become visible from further down either Belvedere or Hamilton?
The trailer or the fence? No, because of where, where it is, I mean.
There's, there's woods in between it, and, um. And it, it's also gonna be positioned not broadside to that whole neighborhood, but.
Right, as you drive up, it's gonna be.
The skinny end of the fence.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna sort of look like it's running away from you.
Yeah.
You're not gonna see the whole length of it.
Yeah, that's important, I mean, not only is it at the end of the, it's very, you're at the end of the street.
We're the last house.
So, it's also linear, uh, linear appearing, it runs away from you rather than. You know, across, broadly across.
You mean to somebody on Belvedere Street?
It runs away from you, yes, it runs, it runs from west to east, pretty much.
So it doesn't create, I mean, the.
It's optically, it, yeah, you would have to sort of be on their properties to be impacted.
The, the whole reason that there's a ban on tall fences is to avoid neighborhoods being chopped up by tall sage boxes.
Right.
Taking on a kind of a, um, a, a, but that's not at all gonna be. A result here in effect.
Visually. Just based on respect.
Criteria number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method. Feasible for the applicant to pursue other than a area of variance. And I would start by saying, um, the only one that has come out in the discussion is vegetation. The idea of whether the, the nuisance here is a, is a violation of law that could be pursued, that's, um, uncertain. We just don't, we can't hold that against the applicant, because we just don't know if that's the case. So I think vegetation is the only, and the applicant has indicated that, uh. Their relief they want is immediate, and, uh, that's a reasonable. Reasonable request, vegetation would take even the fastest growing, not take back right away.
And I'll also add to that, that they've already started the vegetation.
And then, John has, um. Mentioned that we do have the option of attaching a addition requiring removal of the fence. Uh, if, um. Trailer goes away, so you would agree with just the vegetation is the only.
Correct.
It's not, um, feasible, correct. John, what do you think?
Well, from my own practices, vegetation is, was the only alternative, which I did, I, I'm both, on two lines, on two borders. And, uh. But because they've already, as Billy mentioned, started the vegetation, uh, you could, you could end up putting in bigger trees. Uh, you know, it costs you more to get.
Those trees cost a lot.
They're expensive.
Well, they're, they're, they're expensive, so I, I'm saying, you can put a bit, but you already have trees in there, so, uh, you know, it. You can't, I mean, I think it's, they, they, they've already taken some action.
I, I do really want you to look at the trees, sorry.
Oh, we will, no, we will.
In the corner of, of Cedar and, and three oh one.
Probably the skinny, tall, armpit.
They're actually not, they're bushier and they just.
Same tree.
Well, uh, I don't know what they're doing up where I'm at, but they're doing something with them, because they're, they're tight.
Ours haven't even been a year yet, and, and we were told.
They don't grow for the first two, three years.
Years, they said, these aren't gonna grow.
Roots take.
It takes, it takes, it takes just a little, but then all of a sudden they go gangbusters, and, and. The exact same trees are in front of the sewer treat plant down by Mayor's Park.
Yeah.
And they're gigantic.
Yeah.
And they planted them about six, four, four, five years ago. Then they started out like the size I see right here.
Factor number three is whether the requested variance is substantial. And I would say, my view, yes, uh, miraculously, to go from six feet to eight feet, or from four feet to eight feet. Is, um, percentage wise, is significant, uh, especially four to eight, that's a, uh, one hundred percent, um, increase.
Now, you, you, you sort of pegged that at about sixty percent of the fence line, so, so about sixty.
More than half, a little more than half, would be this one hundred percent, um, increase only allowed.
So what is the exact, okay, so we're going above it by two feet for however many feet. A hundred and fourteen feet.
The whole thing is a hundred and four.
Hundred and four, so we're going, yeah, I see what you're saying, so it, it looks like, okay, so for a third of it, we're going two feet above. And for the other two thirds, essentially, four feet above.
What's your response then to factor number three?
I, I, I share your opinion, I mean, it's, it's, it's what we have, uh, found.
Yes, a substantial increase, yes.
Number four, um. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. So this is. Like number one, it deals with effect or impact, but it, but, but more narrowly, the question of environment. Physical conditions. John.
And I think you mentioned that there is, uh, airflow ability in this fence at all, did you mention?
We did say so, yeah, openings.
They're offset.
Yeah, yeah, uh, that's a plus, uh, plus also for your, your property, because it keeps air from getting still.
Yeah, and it won't blow over.
That's right, you, you're running east, west with a north wind, and it's tucked back so much that I just don't think. You're under, uh, a lot of.
There's no other fence around your property at all, correct, this is, this is the only one.
Yeah, I, so I don't see any other difficulties with it, but you'd have to ask the animals.
And we look at things like, uh, airflow, sunlight, will it be blocking sunlight, uh.
And it's not the case, that's.
Not loss.
Yeah.
Wildlife, um, yeah, I, I don't, I see none, nothing substantial there.
Okay.
The last, um. The last factor is, um, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. And this, um, Billy, for newcomers, this one can be a little abstruse, uh, the concept of self-created, what it means is. Did the property owner know, or should they have known about the problem at the time that they acquired the property? So that, um, that they, they knew what they were getting into, that's the meaning of self-created, not that they put the trailer there. But rather, they knew what they were getting into, and when they acquired the property, if the answer is yes. Um, it, it argues against the application, but. About ninety percent of our applications are self-created, do involve self-created difficulties, and the answer is yes. So, because of that universal condition, that just, the nature of a variance request is, is, is. Almost always needs, that it's always some permanent feature that the applicant knew about. Uh, so therefore, although it weighs against the application, it doesn't weigh as heavily as some of the other factors.
Right.
Sometimes people ask, well, what's an example of one that's not self-created? They're not common, but for example, uh, you buy a property, you have open fields on all sides. And then the state decides for the highway right along your property line, so you ask for a tall fence, block the highway. That, that happened after you bought the property, you're totally innocent of the, of the problem. But, no, so that would be not so, not a self-created. And given, against that backdrop, I would say this is definitely, um, a classic self-created. In a sense, um, that they, they knew, they knew about it when they bought the property, they chose to go ahead. Now, understandably, they're seeking to remedy it, but, um, it's some, it's, um, they, they can't, uh, they, um. Uh, it's, it's not a guarantee, so, um, John, do you think otherwise, or do you agree?
Uh, I'll, exactly what you said.
Billy?
Yeah, great.
Doing, we would score here, uh, number one weighed, uh, that's, that's the undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment. Uh, that came out in favor the application, and that's, that's one of the strongest, uh, factors, or the most. Kind of fundamental, uh, number two, uh, achieve the benefit by some other means. And that also came out in favor of the application, that there's no other means. Number three, whether it's substantial, and there, uh, this one weighed against the application, because it was, variance is substantial. Number four, adverse effect, this came out in favor of the application. And then number five, self-created, went against the application, but that's the weakest of the five. So we have two coming out against, uh, one of them is the weak one. And three came out in favor of the application. Billy, you gave a, in a passionate speech.
Was that in a passionate?
Yeah.
Which we can use every now and then, for sure.
You do that sometimes.
Um, supporting, supporting mainly on the grounds of the weak. If I understand correctly, the weak, um, harmlessness of the, of the project.
And, uh, can I add, because this is what we're calling a balancing test. Uh, so we have to engage in that, after we go through the five criteria. Uh, part of the law is, that says, now you have to balance everything you've just heard, and you've just gone through after those points. So, uh, and we have to do it on the record, because if you don't, then it can get kicked right back to you.
Right.
So, it has to be a redo.
Right.
So, do you want to throw us a balancing statement?
Well, I, you know, um. To make this all about me. When we bought our home at Eleven Locust Ridge in two thousand and six. No one told us that every school bus and every ambulance comes down our street. No one, now, I know that you can see your tray, that trailer, and you saw when you bought the land, but I, 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 was that self-created? I don't know.
No, no.
I mean, I, it is, because, like, I could have assumed there's a school, and this is a, that, and then there's bus. I could have done all that, but you know, you get enamored with the idea that, oh, this house, I can make a look at this, and it's gonna turn to that. So, I'm not trying to.
Because they would call it lack of due diligence.
That's probably, they would call it in fact.
There's a limit, let's do.
That's true, but I think that.
When you're buying a house in Cold Spring, you only have like five minutes to look at it before somebody else is buying it.
Well, in two thousand and six, that's not the case, because. My dumb self bought it in like the height of like when I, anyway, but my point is that, I think that, um. Uh, the balancing out of it is, um, I think that we put a condition on this. I think we absolutely say, we understand that the time that we have. Um, and the time that the applicant has, and trying to solve, uh, what essentially is a short-term problem with a solution. That will not be seen by anyone else in the village unless someone is traipsing up someone's private property to see the fence. So I think that, uh, in light of the. The, the remote nature of where this will be, and we have the condition of the trailer leaves, it comes down. Um, I, I think I, I'm not sure if I'm balancing, but I think I stand by what I said, but we're like, I'm, I, I think you're granted.
And it doesn't have to fully come down, you just have to take down.
I mean, just to the, the.
So you, you know, you could leave the foundation.
Given that time, it's something you even needed to do, I mean, it could be like, yeah, take it all down, great.
Well, in, um, in formulating a balancing statement, I don't think you gave sufficient attention to the benefit. That is, um, would, would be visited, um, the applicant, um, through approval. And that is, um, I think it's. I think it's reasonable, I, I, I find it reasonably and reasonable and convincing, the argument that the, um. Trailer is, is a, a serious nuisance, serious detriment to their enjoyment of their property. And, um.
I see, I got it.
So that is what they're, I mean, we, we take that quantifiable, uh, uh, benefit, weigh it against. Wait, I think just earlier, it's, it's almost zero harm to the community, and, um. Clear, it's clear which way the balance falls, that, that Harrison. So, um. So, um. If, if John is.
Was anything missing, you say, in that balancing, um? Well, I think you covered, uh, just about everything.
Well, yeah, the substantiality is, is kind of evaporates when you, when you are convinced that of the near visibility of the fence.
That makes it a lot easier at the moment, yeah, and also, as Billy says, you know, with the understanding. Because it's such a substantial increase over, you know, uh, it is a big ask, you know, for the height, it might not seem like that to you, but it is, you know.
It would be pretty unthinkable if it was right, like, you know, in the middle of the village.
Right, and we're, we're asked to try to follow things as close as possible, that's why they, they bother to even put, you know, rules and codes in, and, uh. Heck, I would like to, somebody used to say, or people who just got on the board and didn't hang around too long, I wanna give them whatever they want. You know, and what would that do to the cold spring, you know? Uh, so it, 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 you know, we, we try to sit here and do a, a little bit of weighing, uh, you know, with the constraints that we're given. And try to do the best thing we can for Cold Spring, and we're actually sworn in to say and do that. So, you know, even as volunteers, there's no pot of gold out for me outside the front door here for coming out with a right answer or a wrong answer, but. Uh, you know, we give it thought, you have experience at it, Billy's gonna be awesome, uh, we're really happy, uh, it's great to see you and great to hear the insight. And, uh, so, yeah, the only other thing is the, uh, the environmental stuff, and I don't see anything, so, uh. We touched on everything else.
Well, then I, I'll make a motion that we, um, tentatively approve the application. And, um, on the, on the basis of the balancing argument that we just elaborated, and, um. It, it, this tentative approval will become final if the planning board returns a responsive no comment. After reviewing this application, and, um, if, uh, on the other hand, if the response is anything but no comment from the planning board. Then we will, at our next meeting, we'll, uh, revisit this decision, uh, if the tentative decision becomes null and void, we'll revisit it. And make a new final decision at that point, taking into account the planning board's comments.
Right, exactly, taking into account, and with the notion that, uh. We are granting this because of the derelict house, uh, being a very unusual situation, uh, and.
Uniquely, unique offensiveness of the nuisance and.
And then once removed, is the condition is everything goes back to what is, you know, allowed.
And I don't know if this helps or not, as far as, as far as reasoning, but I think that, uh, you can think about. No reasonable person would tell you that that trailer is appealing to the eye. There's no reasonable person that would say, you know, that, that's, I like that the way it is.
And the balance is, though, though, coming to the nuisance, as they say, which as a lawyer, you probably understand.
Of course I do, I understood it when, yeah, when you, when we came here asking for those variants.
I moved next to the sewer treat plant, that's a nuisance.
No, I understand.
Okay, so there is, and then the, the, in continuing the motion, uh, I will. I'm adding the condition that you stated that, um, the trailer is removed, uh, in its entirety, then, um, the fence must. Within reasonable time be, um, reduced to, um. Uh, dimensions specified in the zoning code.
Correct.
So that's my motion, is anyone seconded?
All right, well, let Billy do it, come on.
Billy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So, okay, got it, uh, and, and you put the tentative nature of the whole thing, it's just, okay, good, and, uh, so is the hearing left open for the moment?
No, the hearing is closed.
Well, the hearing is closed, but, but we haven't adjourned this whole matter.
Um, well, um. Um, I mean, I'm. The, um. The formulation that I gave defined describes what's gonna happen.
Okay, that's fine.
It's a tentative decision, which will, has a condition attached to it, and it will, uh, go either way depending on the planning board.
Oh, that's true too, because.
We put until further review by planning board, and then we'll revisit or we'll put a board with a.
Yeah, because the other, the other thing that we'll look at is that if just they throw something at it, that, you know, that we would have to look at additional facts. So the question is whether we have to reopen, you don't wanna make them put it all.
No, no, it wouldn't mean reapply, it would just, it mean we would have to revisit our thinking in the light of the planning board's.
Take into consideration their comments and then.
We might end up with the same decision or a different decision.
Right, right.
Our decision.
Okay.
Incorporate their, their response, and I'll, I'll, I'll update you, I'll, I'll let you know as soon as I hear it, but, like I said, they're meeting in three days, so.
What's up, keep timing that, that's.
We know, Dixie's Belvedere is asking for a subdivision, you know, are you guys, are you guys gonna comment on it? But we might watch.
Gonna watch.
Yeah, I am curious, there will be a period for you to comment during the planning board as well after they have presented, I think, so, feel free.
Right, we're good, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Watch out for that trailer.
You should go take a look. Yeah, that's the, that's the problem, right, that nobody in Cold Spring has an interest in that trailer.
Unless it was sixteen or seventeen years old.
Is it dark now, like, is the light on?
The light goes on every night at the same time, so there's some kind of an automatic. Light that goes on in the trailer at night, and that, the periodic sheets and jeans and t-shirt that hang out, the same ones, you know, go in and then they come out, so you can. Watch it all happen, I, I watch it all unfold.
So there's not a squatter in there, is there?
No, I mean, the guy that owns it on Hamilton Street is around.
Okay.
You know, he's around, like, when we first bought the house, he came over and he introduced himself, um. And said some very strange stuff to us about the property and the trailer and Belvedere Street, and I think we may have said, he said, um.
He said, you're gonna like me, he's myself, I don't ask questions.
I mind my own business.
And then he said, and down here at night, it's, it's dark, and you can hear paint drop. Welcome. That sounds like Twilight Zone.
Looks like Twilight Zone, too.
That's probably where they filmed it.
Okay, um. Yes, um, we have.
No other business.
No other business.
Okay, I'll look to him.
I'm gonna screw this up, I'll, it's all right.
Well, no, no, you were great.
Okay.
You really had, had, um, kept the ball going, kept the ball going.
Okay.
Yeah, no, because we need insight from everybody, and, and you're very, uh, astute at, at, at the things you're picking up on your first day, no less.
Also very, um, communicative, you communicate well, that's, so you put people at ease, I'm sure, the applicant.
I all sees that one.
I'm sure it will.
So we should keep this.
So do I leave, I just leave all this stuff here, right?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Especially if you're a, a digital person.
Well, is there, is there like some sort of like, I should have notes that I, because I'm not a great note taker, to be honest, so.
Well, no times.
Like during, uh, a hearing, you might, I mean, I was writing down notes as he was talking about my own concerns about the project, so that I didn't. Forget to ask you.
Okay.
Is what I do.
Okay, because I'd reviewed all the documents like online before I came, so I sort of, I knew what, uh, everything was new to me.
Good.
Yeah, you, you really aren't responsible for keeping notes.
That might go for more.
Oh, yeah, you don't, you don't have to keep it, it's just for your own benefit, to make sure that you know to ask the right questions, or if you came, like you said, you looked at things online. So that you would, uh, you, you'd find out what the code provision is, go look at it.
Right.
You know, find out what it is, you can just make a donation yourself, this way you're just learning the code over time too.
Right.
Uh, and just even glancing through the code a few times, you get an idea of what it tends to try to accomplish, and Eric was, uh, part of the group that. Tried to update the.
Yeah, um, you, when we have the orientation session.
Great.
You know, certainly, earning will fill you on. Expectations that. Attached to the possession.
And one of them, you know, it, it, it doesn't hurt, like, Eric has done this too, and. You know, to go online and just look things up, now, there are codes, you know, throughout the United States, and, you know, all little municipalities, you know, villages, counties, and everything. And, you know, they vary, but not too much, you know, they're all fairly consistent, and they borrow from each other, you know, to find out what is the best. Way of writing the rule, and, and you, you look to see what the municipality's like, you know, what, what are its attributes, you know. Small town or big town.
Right.
But anyway, it gives you a way of how they think. Uh, by going through it, what do you think, I mean, because you've looked at matters. I could tell when you walked in, you know.
You're looking at whether it's truthful to look at the codes of other.
Well, but not, but, well, you know, what happens is when you read the issues, when you hear issues come up, and you go on, online, and you read about it, then you go back and you look at their codes. And you see what the logic is and the reasoning, which is really all we're doing.
But it's useful to, um, um, read decisions that were reached by boards, ZBAs in, within New York State, I mean, I think it's. Healthy to stay within New York State.
Right.
Dictated by state law.
Right.
And if you go outside the state, you don't know what exactly is, oh my god.
Right.
But, you know, this can be useful to read the, update decisions, like the board of Huntington decided this because of this. They were backed up by the court.
And you'll hear them go, they'll go through the criteria, the, the case law decisions, and you, you can find them, they'll put them online, they'll go through those five criteria. You can see how their thinking is, and, and by the way, those are the courts who are there, you know, not only hearing the materials. But they were also then logically processing from how, uh, each element comes out. So we did have a situation once where, uh, where they came in and said there was no balancing statement, it sort of was a balancing statement, but. It wasn't defined at all, it wasn't set upfront.
That happened here.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be a thing that would take me a while to figure out, just as far as like how to, how to craft that.
Was it your understanding that this balancing statement has to be spoken out during the meeting, or can it be in the?
At the conclusion of reading, uh, going through the criteria, you then do a balancing statement. Which is what. Yeah, and the, the, the court went to citation.
Which is, is essentially the decision itself.
In essence, it is, but, you know, taking everything in balance, so they, they not only want you to go through each criteria individually, and then not just walk away. Then they want you to weigh the, the, the mass of them together, uh, and if you don't do it. And a court once said, oh, you didn't do it, so they threw the whole thing back at us, and at that point, uh. People all caved in, but we're still on. Okay, well, this is, this is.
Oh, we can, I guess, do we adjourn now?
Someone has to make a motion.
I, I think I cleared it.
Okay, John has moved, and we adjourn, and I second the motion.
All, Dave?
All in favor?
Aye, aye, thanks, we can cut, cut the film. Thank you, Eric.